I'll be fine. Like, oh my god, I can relate to that. I want all you down alone. Hi.
It's like.
Ah. I'm funny girl.
Hey.
Not a good list.
Ah. I can run down. No. I won't get down. That makes sense. The second time. I'm like, wow.
I'm sorry.
Good evening, citizens of Lewisburg. Our council. Welcome to our February nineteenth. Meeting of the Lewisburg Town Council. Thank all of you for coming out. Again by having our low call clerk.
Mayor Neal.
Here.
Councilor Silver.
Here.
Councilwoman Woods.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Day.
Yep.
Councilwoman Wright.
Here.
Councilwoman Day.
Here.
Councilman, thanks.
Here.
You. I remember to the invitation. Uh, could I ask Councilwoman Wright to give us our invitation, please?
Thank you, Lord, for those that have come out this meeting. To do the living of your town. Thank you, Lord, for bringing us together. Let us be on one accord, let us be being decently and in order. Lord, bless those that have came here tonight. Let, let them know what's going on, that they're listening to this morning. And let them just, we are here for the Lord, for our saving. Lord, thank you for what you are doing with this town and everything else that exists. Thank you.
My great journey through the trial, but not to say so many. The state of the cloud of which is saying, on condition, under God, in the best of all. That's the problem.
Item number four, article ten eight, that's the adoption of the agenda. Could I get a little bit of the, uh, the agenda if you need? Thank you. We move to topic seven, you know, about tonight's, uh, agenda. All in favor, uh, also. Item number five, approval of the minutes. Uh, is there any, um, corrections that have been made to the minutes? Um, January twenty second, twenty twenty four, which is our regular meeting of last month? And, uh, special meeting of February ninth, twenty twenty four, special call meeting. Are there any corrections, uh, of council as it relates to those minutes? If not, could I get a motion to approve some of this? Remove the property section that we accept the minutes with January twenty second, twenty twenty four, which is our regular meeting of last month? As well as our special call meeting of February ninth, twenty twenty four. All in favor?
Uh.
Also. Item number six on the agenda, public comment. This is the time on our agenda, ladies and gentlemen, when we ask you, the public, uh, if you have anything that you want council to know about, or anything you would like to adjust to the council. Now's the time. Uh, they asked if you do have any comments to counter our, uh, podium there. Give your name and your address.
Brennan.
Yes.
I'm Brennan Davis, three zero two King Street here in Lewisburg. Mr. Davis. Uh, make sure that microphone's on, please. Ring off. I'm Brennan Davis, three zero two King Street. Um, I've missed too many, so I'm a little behind the eight ball. I'm gonna valorize something that Councilmember Stein said, and I hope you'll forgive me if I get it wrong. The white flag shelter issue come up. And I got the impression that her comment was something like, it is not the business of municipal government, we involved in Christian charity. I've already said before, I'm a big believer in separation of church and state, and I believe in that concept. I still don't know why our churches have not actively stepped up. There are two churches on North Main Street that have ample space and facilities. There's at least one church on South Main Street that has adequate facilities and space. And in my neighborhood, there's a little church with a big heart. And I haven't heard very much, many of those churches setting up. We've had, uh, I, I don't know why, there's been so much difficulty getting this idea across. I have it on good authority that some of our policemen have helped people in emergency situations, which is probably why no one has yet found hypothermia or diet nutrition. But I don't think we should ask our police force to protect our citizens who are just a package. I have, well, a suggestion that probably won't be very popular. The police are gonna dig into their own pockets to save people who die or need. Maybe we should give our police force a raise. Just saying.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Anne Alston, I'm the owner of W R A N radio station here in Lewisburg. And I have an issue going on, um, with the flooding. And, you know, the radio station is very valuable to this community. Everyone that's seen the hurricane with us, they have a dog cornered, and I very feel appreciating everyone that's at, um, freaking out at the station, and we serve the community very well, especially with our golf course and, um, programming that we do have going on. We have R M B too, but, you know, the most impossible that seems to get everybody through. Y'all love going, but it was almost gone a few weeks ago because, um, um, as you know, on Highway, um, four nine five, used in, in Lewisburg. They started development over there. And the development, after they pushed off all this, the land to build, it seemed to, it was a stream, you know, we got two ponds there. And one, you know, they got a drain pipe. It flowed through the station been there for fifty-five years, never had this happen. So, after they pushed off the land and about a couple months, and I saw it seeing water spilled up in laughing. And it's a whole stream, but the water had, and I had pictures, and we all, and then I passed it in. We all wanted to look at it, it was like, it started a whole car and by my tower, had reached the tower, it would have destroyed the entire station. So, it was getting so broad to, I contacted Mayor Neal, and, cause I didn't know who to contact. So, he told me, you know what, I'm just walking into office. He called Keith Callahan, and I'm going in, I'm going to feed him as well. I called Brother Keith, and as soon as I called him, he came out and like fifteen men, and looked at everything, he said, oh my god, this did something, you know, and we talked. And so he started to get back on, and I said, well, you don't have a minute, Dave, to get back on it. This was last Monday. So, on the fifteenth, he came back with someone else, and they walked the field. So, Brother Keith told me, he said, you know what, I can have this done by tomorrow, the other guy said, whatever you say. So, anyways, Brother Keith, he did come out. Whatever they did, the water left the field, and they told me it was a beaver dam. I told him the station been there sixty-five years, and beaver hadn't built a dam with trees. All that, that land on. I just prayed that that should happen again, I just wanted to finish. People there was, and I contacted Mayor Neal, and that thing moving, and now all the water had vanished. And I appreciate that, you know, the mayor, Mayor Neal stepping in and doing what he did. And also Brother Keith, cause the beak day would be there the next day, he was there next day. And they moved all the trees, and I heard it would move the beaver too.
Anyone else?
Brandon Jenny, who's there at three North Main Street. Um, I just wanna talk a little bit about that shelter that, uh, many of you probably know me. I'm a police officer in this town for almost five years. Although this town, although the people here, I thought this town is noticeably safer than since I moved here. I'm happy to be raised my family here, but I will say that in my, in my experience with calling Lewisburg, I know homeless people on near daily basis. This is almost always a response to a shoplifting, prompting disorderly call, begging, breaking, entering, leaving, some others. White flag, the white flag shelter may have good intentions, I'm telling you. That is not a good idea for a town this size. You vote for this, will forever change our experience this town. Once the word gets out, there will be a large influx of homeless, whether they say white flag or not. It will not matter what stipulations are set. Once there is an influx, influx, they will not leave. Our town's not equipped to deal with this. Our law enforcement is already stretching it and, and are not properly staffed with as long amount of calls for service than any increase in homeless would bring. If you vote for this, something as simple as going to get gas and groceries will not be the same. Where you go, you will be approached for money, stores will have free stuff, it goes on. I really want you as a council to focus on making this town a better place, safer place to live here and pay taxes here. Help our property values, that should be your primary function as a council. This shelter is none of those things. Expecting volunteers to run this is also naive and best. Oftentimes homeless people suffer from mental illness, addiction, or COVID. Volunteers are not gonna be equipped to deal with this. Safety standpoint, that puts a lot of liability on the town. What is the plan for actually helping these people not be homeless any longer? Is this just wanna be a helping ground for other towns? Or are we actually trying to help them help themselves? I believe we do as a father, husband, and friend, to not break something like this door open.
Hello, Bob Cooper, seven oh one North Main Street. First thing I want to thank the town for, uh, the detailed transcript of the comments on this, this month's meeting. Uh, and town, I want to thank you for great picking up all the trash from the long overdue seasonal dirt led, our, our historic Oakwood Cemetery, that's a big dump, makes, looks really good out. Council, you've got a lot of things going on. It's New Year, new council, lot to do. A council does not, a government and a municipality does not make money, it don't, it can only take, and there are two key numbers that impact the amount of money you have in your coffers. And you're starting out pretty lean to begin with. And those numbers, value and the tax rate. And it, and they are not, uh, compatible in that if you raise the tax rate, you're not necessarily raising revenue because that helps suppress value. As well some of the, as in some of the decisions you make. Your key function is to increase value. Increasing value gives you the resources for your, your, uh, projects, the things that you're interested in. You need that revenue that you're essentially taking from us, that we are willing, we're, you're willing to provide. If you're doing your part, which is being great stewards of our rep resources and enhancing our values, you enhance our values and we can do more. But going right in and spending, it's only gonna suppress. When, and when you have some of the initiatives you've taken, it's going to deter further development and, and further concentrate the demand for that revenue. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Paige Sale, one oh six Jeffers Drive. I want to first thank you for moving public comments to the beginning of the meeting. Many times there are issues that are on the agenda that the public may have comments about or concerns about. This gives you information to go about the business of the meeting. It gives you information to think about, you know, what they say and so you can make better decisions. The other thing I want to do is to encourage every single one of you to look at the institute of government. They have an elected director of sports. Some of it's online, some of it is in person. I have coffee to give you. They have great programs that will help all of you out because continuing education is important, no matter what your job. And all of you signed up for this. Went out, you campaigned, you were elected. And so to make the time to do this, it's important for you and it's important for some of our candidates. I'll pass, I'll hand these over and you can pass them around, it's just a list of the courses that they offer. But I think that's beneficial, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, council, my name is Brian Ellington, and I live at one twenty-eight Tanglewood Drive. And I am also here to speak on the issue of white flag shelter. I am not as confident in my views as any people who've previously spoken up to this point. Tonight, I'm not as confident in my view as many of the people who've spoken on the issue, but I want to address one of the things that I just keep hearing when it comes to the white flag shelter. I just keep hearing that the local government doesn't need to do anything because the churches can handle. I just keep hearing that the churches should just open up their buildings to house all the people so that the local government doesn't have to worry about it. But the problem with that is that very frequently churches run into major obstacles when it comes to housing. One, churches run into major liability obstacles. Two, churches run into major insurance obstacles, frequently the insurance policy. Churches are legally required to have, prevent them from housing, and three, churches frequently run into major legal issues, especially, most churches are not zoned to double as homeless shelters. Church leaders in multiple states in the union have literally gone to jail for attempting to house the homeless. So to say that the church can handle it, so the city can also have to, is, I think, either naive or dishonest. I don't think people are ready, I apologize for that. But the point is, I don't know if the white flag shelter is the solution or not. I'm not an expert on that. I don't know what the unintended consequences could be, I don't know the pros and cons of it, but what I can say is what the churches of our area have been doing over the past few months as they had deep freezes is, churches have been spending thousands of dollars every time the temperatures get below freezing to put homeless people into motels. Churches have been pouring money into housing homeless in the only way that they legally can with liability, insurance zoning, and so on and so forth. But what happens every, every time there's a deep freeze, and we, we ended up digging deep into our pockets and burning nearly all of our assistance money on just stopping for reasons, yeah. And so I, I am, I, I implore, I beg, I, I don't know what the solution is. I don't know if it's a white flag shelter. So I beg you, please, find some kind of, of efficient and effective solution that, that, that takes that burden off of the nonprofits in the area. That is beyond what we are capable of handling with the resources that we got. Uh, whatever it is, please do something. I apologize for my interdictive rambling, uh, thank you.
Anyone else?
Liz Bible, fourth level Sunset Avenue. Just wanna speak to the white flag issue. Um, I, I too don't know what the answer is. I do know it needs a lot of research. But I would encourage you all to not look at homeless people as a thing, but that they are human people, that they are people with hearts. And they matter, and they're not drug addicts, and they're not alcoholics, and they're not immigrants, they're people. And we need to stop looking at this as, what can we do with these people? These are our fellow human beings, we need to treat them such, with some respect, some dignity.
What?
Reverend Edward one twenty John S Street, Lewisburg. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak then. Um, and I'm speaking to you about white flag. A few misconceptions that I would like to clear up. And this is research all over, not just this country, but the world. White flag is not, please hear my words, is not a homeless shelter. White flag is an emergency shelter to keep people from freezing to death. Well, it is. There are guidelines, um, the CDC and HUD do not have very well established guidelines, but there are white flag shelters, as I said, all over the country. And they communicate with each other. Um, each white flag shelter is its own entity, and each white flag shelter sets up its own criteria. We, a group from the Intervay Council, and our town administrator, and I am forever grateful that he did attend the meeting, went to a meeting in Raleigh, was it Reverend Vance, hey, hey, what's, you, who is the leader of the white flag program in Raleigh? It, it is, their, their shelters, white flag shelter are in churches, for the most part. They have grown, they do have a, a very good relationship with their local government. They have built that relationship. Nobody can do this by themselves. Gentlemen that talk about, and thank you for your words, that talked about, um, nonprofits, nonprofits can do it by themselves, the Intervay Council sure can one. Um, putting people in the hotels, we don't give a discount. I beg, uh, I put somebody in for a whole week, I make it a discount, and that's at the budget end in Franklin, and it's nothing in Lewisburg. And it's between a hundred and five and eighty dollars a night to have somebody in any one of our hotels. Um, we've done it. Uh, according to, um, Reverend Vance, it did not impact their insurance with their churches in Raleigh. They did, of course, go through all the process of checking that out, as we would. And as we would in partnership with the town of Lewisburg. This is a shelter that may be open once a month during the winter. It may be open twenty times during the winter. I don't have an answer for that, cause I don't predict, well, well, I don't think it will. So, anyway, uh, I'm asking for the citizen, these people, some of them are working, they're living in their car. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, government, my name is Eddie Bennett, I'm a member of the Intervay Council. And I'd just like to say that, uh, I appreciate the town's willingness to investigate the situation of white flag homelessness. I appreciate the town's willingness to come out to a meeting with us, to go to Raleigh, and to understand what happens at a real white flag shelter. We were there, and we, uh, we visited with Reverend Vance, and he gave us the enlightening insight as to all the problems and the, and the blessings that a white flag shelter can give to a homeless person. And as everyone so eloquently has put before me, there are many people that have to make up the system. And part of it can be the town. In Raleigh, it happens to be the town, the county, the church, and about fourteen sponsors that make up the white flag situation. White flag is a situation that happens when the temperature goes below thirty-five on any given day. Now, in Lewisburg, during the year of, uh, two thousand and twenty-three, there was twenty, I'm sorry, seventy-one of those days. So far this year, in January, there was twenty-three days. And it looks like in February for the whole month, there'll be another fourteen days, possibly another twelve days in March. So this is a temporary thing, it's an emergency situation that happens periodically. You have an infrastructure, you're already feeding it, and it's not being used to its full extent. And this is a way the town can help the churches, everyone else get to the, the end result, that is the safety of these people. Churches are already extended beyond what they can do. They have soup, they can soup pantries, they do meals for the community, they can picnic drives, they go out during these cold weather events, and they provide them with meals and hot chocolate and vitamins. So just be aware that it's a community effort, it's a temporary situation, and it's not likely to affect anybody's property value in anything. This shows that the community is a community that's willing to help this on. Thank you.
Sure. Sir. Yes, could you give your address for the clerk, Anthony? Okay. Could you give your address for the clerk?
She's been seeing Fisher away.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Weaver, three sixteen Sunset Avenue in Lewisburg. And I would like to address the, uh, white flag shelter. I will say that if I had known my, my daughter and three grand children, they would be homeless because they couldn't find anything to rent in this town that they could afford after their home rental, so. I will say during the bitter cold weather, I even went outside and got my cat, because I don't like to be in the house, to come inside so that it would be safe. And if I can, if we can bring our animals in and take care of them, we need to be able to take care of ourselves. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? God, citizens, I wanna thank you for bringing your comments to us tonight, and, uh, we appreciate it. Thank you so much. Moved on, uh, item number seven, we have a presentation by Path and Late Marketing, uh, Mr. Case.
Good evening. Mayor Neal, council members. My name is Robert Chase, I'm the owner of Path and Late Marketing. So today, uh, well, tonight, uh, we wanna present a presentation to you guys. Uh, where we feel the strategy that we formulated will help, uh, the town of Lewisburg in some of these areas, revenue wise, um, but also help economic growth in that manner, in the form of municipal planning, municipal marketing. So we're gonna start off, um, showing a brief video, I think the video was about five minutes. It basically shows our body of work. Um, then from there, I'll go down through particularly, uh, strategy, uh, that we propose from the, uh, markets. Uh, I'll call up another company that partners with us, um, that will give their, um, strategy as well in the event planning. that will give their strategy as well in the event planning space. Right? And then from there, I'll come with parts and then we'll pretty much play another video like you. So if we can start that video. So what you see here is commercials that we've done in this town, what have you, now many years. It's just a proper plug. Been in this town for, um, maybe twenty, twenty years. So this is a Republican commercial for the city of Philadelphia. So this is another commercial that we put together. Uh, this particular video is an awareness of the business. Uh, this is what we call an animated, fully animated, uh, swag. To basically spread awareness. This is, this, uh, commercial is going to call the time to be. And also, you know, we're a B to B company. So we have other businesses as well too. So this is a company that we've been a long time ago with that, you know, build their revenue, uh, which is a fitness.
Please do a microphone on there. Do you have a green light?
Yes, so.
Yeah, he might speak to her for a minute.
Okay. So again, here's another, uh, company, um, out of Arizona that is in Bradbury. So the idea here was to basically build up their revenue and also build up their following. Because it's not many people knew about, you know, they're, they're going to speedway in that area. This also is another commercial, um, where we, we launched an online, uh, campaign for a company that sells bow ties and head, 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 uh, gear for members. Now, this particular project, uh, is another Wade County, uh, project where, uh, we started this project back in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen for the Wade Transit Initiative. And the idea here was Wade County wanted to get a lot of the commuter traffic off of the highways, going to public transportation. And so we put together and enhanced, and another enemy, uh, commercial to show how many people could be gotten off of the streets, highways, things of that nature, they use public transportation each month. Now, here are our online, um, uh, marketing strategies for particular companies in a mobile app or a mobile word, um, which, you know, we'll do the same for, uh, the town of, uh, Lewisburg as we promote different initiatives uh, that the town has going on. Um, we also do what's called a, um, behind the scenes or in the day of life of other municipalities or other, uh, departments. And then, so the citizens can see exactly what goes on behind the scenes. And, and the same here for, uh, makeup company. Uh, because basically what we show in these particular advertisements is, um, how exactly the public can benefit from these things, which they may not necessarily see, uh, or whatever. So that's basically our, just a drunker couple of ideas. And so I'm going to move on. So basically, our marketing plan, um, starts with a research and analysis. Basically, what we do is we do an economical assessment where we engage economists, researchers, or consulting firms to conduct a comprehensive analysis of Lewisburg's economic landscape. Including trends, strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities. In order to put together a, um, effective strategy, we have to know what we're talking about. We have to understand the landscape. We have to understand what the pros and cons are, uh, of the, the condition Lewisburg began. Take that, put that into a, a crafted strategy so that we, when we launch the campaign, we, you know, put the content out there, it helps the public understand how Lewisburg is, um, catering to their need. It helps, it helps the citizens of Lewisburg understand that the council members and the government bodies as a whole have their best interests at heart. So that's the first step we take. We do what's called a set clear objectives. We define goals. We establish specific targets for job creation, business attraction, industry diversification, and infrastructure development. We do what's called a commercial advertisement where we develop commercials like you just saw in the video, um, which highlights the vision and goals of Lewisburg's economic growth, showcasing the town's potential and opportunities. Right? Thirdly, this, uh, we identify target audiences. In order for Lewisburg to grow, we have to attract the attention of those that help the economic growth happen. Right? So what we do is, in the local business sector, we produce video content featuring successful local businesses. All right? Um, their growth stories, how Lewisburg supported their development. We do, um, uh, we, we solicit potential investors, which we create targeted videos presenting investment opportunities showcasing infrastructure plans, available, uh, available resources and incentives for investors. All right? We also take a online digital approach. All right? Because we're in a, we're in a technological age. Everything is online. Um, my team with, um, Wade County Government, we did, we launched the same thing. We launched the same type of initiative. And we were very successful with that. When we first started with, when we first started, we started with website enhancement and content strategy. Sometimes a municipality, um, a small municipality may not have the content. So what we have to do is create the content. Right? Citizens like to be or like to live in an area that they're proud of. And they like to live in an area that's strategic, that's innovative, that's intelligent. Right? And so we, we start that, that, that process by, um, a website up there. Right? Basically, what we do is we incorporate video content on the website, including introductory videos, success stories, and visual representation, representation of future developments. We build or enhance the website that you guys already have so that it becomes very comprehensive, very informative. When I work with Wade County, I work with the digital design and services. And Wade County's, um, we basically man Wade County's, uh, infrastructure, um, their, uh, website for the people facing citizens. And so we have what's called a feature on the front of the page where it shows current events, things that are going on in the, uh, town of Wade County. Um, uh, the, the, the smallest thing is where you can go pay your water, you know, but it was all graphics and, um, uh, visual detail. Very, very easy to navigate, things of that nature in the citizens' pocket. We also, in the website enhancement and content strategy area, we do video content creation, which we, we, we live in an age where people have a read. The attention span is that, that long. People like to watch video. In our, in our case studies, we found that eighty-four percent of video marketing is higher than any other form of marketing in today's society today. People like to watch and get information and things of that. So we developed a series of informative videos explaining economic initiatives, infrastructure projects, and success stories within Lewisburg. To move on, um, what I'm going to do, I'm going to jump down to local, uh, fifteen minutes. Line item nine. Line item nine is communities, engagement, and events. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to bring up fireworks entertainment. Uh, this gentleman, um, uh, was a co-owner, owned a, um, entertainment company. He specialized in festivals, music concerts, things of that nature. We believe bringing in a particular company like this to partner with Friday Night on the Tar, some of the concert series committee by helping bring in bigger names, bigger, uh, events, that kind of thing, to give the citizens something to look forward to every year. All right? So I'm going to let him come forward and he's going to explain from his viewpoint.
Thank you, Mayor Neil and fellow council members, giving us fireworks entertainment the opportunity to employ the path of Wade Marketing, the efforts to establish a new modern and fresh image for Lewisburg that represents a kind, innovative, economically, communicative, intelligent place to live, work, and play. My name is Travis Jefferson, one of the owners for fireworks entertainment. He specializes in music festivals and concerts. Music entertainment is a universal language that we all can agree that is very impactful. Um, it's therapeutic. It brings faith, hope, and love to the brokenhearted and life to the depressed. Um, we stand on our mission to strive and touch many souls who are offering faith, hope, and love through music, music events. Our company slogan, enjoy life through music and entertainment, is the hymn of every planned musical project we created since our doors opened back in two thousand and twelve. This is what we plan to offer in collaborative effort with Pathway, Pathway Marketing and the Town of Lewisburg Event Committee and the citizens of Lewisburg. We organize music festivals and concerts with national recording artists such as Kelly Price and Vionne in cities such as Roddy and Greenville. And our family do concerts and festivals in other major areas in the future. Um, our sister event company, our sister event promoter that we work closely with, um, has a large resume also, that's, um, work closely with entertainers such as Janet Jackson, Maxwell, and legendary Patty LaBelle. Um, in doing so for Lewisburg, we know and understand that organizing some outlets and events could increase physical revenue at about twenty percent. Um, also, our music events and festivals, we know will create space for community spending opportunities that citizens of Lewisburg can benefit from. So once again, thank you for the opportunity. Um, we look forward to collaborating with the town of Lewisburg, creating a new modern image that's kind, innovative, and intelligent place that our citizens can be proud of, work, live, and play.
I'm going to close with one more point and then we're going to play the last video. Um, so in highlighting unique selling propositions, um, we take an approach with what we call a visual showcase. Once we establish these particular content, uh, uh, strategy for the town of Lewisburg, we do what's called a visual showcase. We present what we've been able to collaborate with the council members, the city, the citizens, to the surrounding areas through a marketing, uh, strategic, excuse me, strategic, uh, uh, effort. Right? So basically, we, we produce visual captivating videos showcasing Lewisburg's unique attractions, historical landmarks, and cultural riches. All right? We also recommend for, uh, other businesses, um, to create informative videos outlining business incentives offered by the municipalities, uh, highlighting why Lewisburg is an ideal location for business growth. So in closing, we're going to play the last video, if we can. Then I'll come back and say, hold on a while. What you see here are concepts drawn of what we feel partner with, partnering with us in a strategic plan of building Lewisburg's municipal branding and, uh, economical growth to bring to the town. So in closing, I want to leave you guys with this. Implementing these strategies, Lewisburg can effectively leverage digital marketing channels to promote economic growth, attract investments, foster entrepreneurship, and engage with communities to create a vibrant, thriving local economy. Incorporating video marketing, commercial advertising into stage of the plan, Lewisburg can effectively communicate its economic vision, engaging stakeholders and attract investment interest by showcasing the town's unique appeal and opportunities. Thank you, council member and Mayor Neil.
Item number eight on the agenda of the public hearing. Uh, that public hearing will for the sale of, uh, one hundred Fun Road. Uh, should I give a motion for the council to go into public hearing?
Certainly.
We're moving property setting. There we go. Any public hearing for sale of one hundred Fun Road. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, this is a parcel of land that is directly behind uh, the old mini market located on Gate of Six South Main. This parcel had been put up for sale previously, uh, but, uh, this is very recent years ago. The owners of the individual who put in the bid subsequently withdrew because of financial reasons. The, uh, property has remained in the town ownership. Uh, many of you know that, uh, as a result of a legal action, uh, the mini market closed. Uh, it was purchased by another business, Zenith Flooring. They, once they purchased that property, they inquired of town, of the town staff, whether or not we would entertain selling this property. Uh, we informed Zenith that the town would consider this as a We informed Zenith that the town would consider this, as we had previously declared surplus, and that under the provisions of the state law, we had a mechanism to direct a sale of the property to Zenith exclusively, as opposed to the more traditional method, which is an upset bid process. And the reason why we're able to do this under state law is because, may recall, we adopted the South Main Street Community Development Plan, and that plan identified opportunities to promote a variety of initiatives, economic development in the South Main Street area as one of those objectives. And so this sale would further that objective and consequently allow us to proceed under that provision of state law. So we explained to Zenith what the price of the property would be, which I think fifteen thousand would be the sale price. It well exceeds the assessed value, which I think is listed in your staff report. And again, the purpose of it is for business expansion of Zenith Flooring. All of those elements are required provisions to be announced as part of the public hearing and subsequent to any kind of input from the council.
Any questions from the council?
Do they intend to propose more into that?
I think the initial objective would be expansion of the building for storage, and then possibly, once they kind of get their business up and going, would be to enlarge and the footprint of it.
You have a question from the council?
Not a question, just a comment. Thank you for explaining why the direct sale is possible versus the traditional bid process. I would be happy about that.
You have a question from the council? Any questions from the council? No more questions from the council or the public. I give a motion to close public hearing. We're moving property session, we're closing public hearing for sale of one hundred Fun Road. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Simultaneously, a resolution to clear surplus since of the property on Fun Road.
That resolution is just in action by council now that you can get the public.
I'm moving to sell, sell one property, sell the property at one hundred Fun Road.
I said.
We're moving property second that we are moving to sell, sell the property on Fun Road. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I have number ten, adopting of an updated fee schedule. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'll let Mr. Medlin go first, because we're doing double duty on this.
Mayor, thank you. Tonight I have a request to update the current fee schedule for the town for certain services and violations. And largely this is due because of the increased birth pressures and the related increase of cost-provoking infrastructure purposes due to inflation. The town staff has revisited the fee schedule for all their services. A portion of these fees have not been updated in decades and does not reflect how a doing business nor is comparable with the values around jurisdiction. To help reduce the subsidization of these expenditures by property taxes, staff is recommending increases to make it work. We'll need a motion of approval, a motion of ready. First of all, I'm going to talk a little bit about the water supply fees. As you all are aware, we have a tremendous amount of infrastructure that we are seeking to fix. We were actually putting in new equipment where we can. By us doing so, we reached out to our town engineer and he was able to work with us and advised us that if we actually increased our water rates by four dollars and our sewer rate by four dollars each month, that we would be eligible for seventy-five percent grant, seventy-five percent down the possibility. So tonight, part of this is asking for that. The four dollars, we have to make five thousand gallons a month as part of our proposition here. And in doing so, we have to increase our rates by two or three dollars for water and sewer. So basically, our rate for water would go from ten oh one to service fee, the fourteen oh one to service fee, and our sewer rate would go to nine oh one. So the customer would see a four dollar a month increase in their bill per water and sewer.
So this is just a one night, it's not based on usage, it's just a flat fee?
Yes, we could have done the usage as the flat fee, or we could have moved it into the bill gallon per month. It works out cheaper to do the flat fee.
Any additional questions? If not, I will charge you. If you will take a look on page nineteen of your packet, there is a survey that we took of various jurisdictions in and around the area of Roseville, Youngsville, Franklin County, Franklin County, and then Lewisburg. Most of these fees are directly related to development. They are historically, have been absorbed in part by the town. In other words, we wrote, we incurred those costs and really didn't get any money back. Now, that's not all of them. In other areas, we did charge fees, but we haven't, we haven't updated those things in, much like Mr. Medlin said, decades. And we're really kind of doing business in a way that's not very cost-effective for the town. So in an attempt to try to bring us up to, up to date in trying to defer the cost of some of these bad things, particularly as development comes to town, we were recommending increasing some of these fees. And they're not all fees, a couple of, some of these have to do with fines. And I'll, I'll go over them. I'm not going to, not going to go over each line item. You're certainly welcome to quiz me if you want, as you go through the list. I was just going to hit a couple of high points. Some of this has to do with parks and recreation. We actually, in that, in those areas, we increased the fees last year and we recommend increasing those. So we're not going to increase those. I just wanted to make you aware that we were, while we looked at it, we felt that the increase from last year was something worth retaining. Under the police, you know, we have tickets that we issue, everything from handicap, loading zone violations, fire lane violations, that kind of stuff. We have an administrative fee for fingerprints. All of those, we're recommending, you know, they were nominal amounts in the past, like five bucks or something like that. Well, you know, nothing's that cheap anymore. So we're, we're suggesting increasing those, particularly for violations. Some other minor fees, selling beer, selling wine, vehicle registration fees. All of that is, we actually have caps under state law, how much we can charge. In some cases, we didn't charge anything. So that was an opportunity to try to address those issues. There's a lot of stuff under planning and zoning, basically, the role of the town as it relates to development. When developers come into town, build houses, build shopping centers, all that kind of stuff. There's a lot that goes into it that the town actually does. Reviewing plans, making decisions, getting assistance from consultants and stuff. All of that, historically, we, we have in some ways gotten fees from, but mostly, we haven't been getting enough fees or no fees at all. So this is an attempt to try to align our fee schedule to match what other jurisdictions are doing. Because we're just losing out on money. And of course, the fact, the fact of the matter is, is that when we do that, the people who pay the difference are the citizens, when in fact, it should be the developers who are making the money off the deal, should ante up a little bit more. So it's a little bit more equitable. The, the other cemetery lots, historically, we have been, we've been charging fairly cheap rates for those. We are recommending an increase in those from the past. I believe the schedule for the cemetery lots are in your packet, page twenty. We're recommending basically flat fees for resident and non-resident. TAP fees, that's what you pay when you tie on to our water system or our sewer system. Developers pay this routinely when they develop subdivisions. We are recommending going from fifteen hundred to two thousand. That's actually pretty cheap still. Although, you know, I think I listed in here Franklin County's TAP fees. That does not, while it is true those numbers reflect their cost for TAP fees, they have supplemental fees that they tie on to that. So it, it actually is closer to what we're recommending, two thousand dollar number to reflect what their costs are. So it, it kind of puts us in line so that it's more competitive. On the electrical system, we've been kind of behind the eight ball for a long time on some of these monthly fees for poles and backyard lighting, those kinds of things. Electric meters, we've never charged before, so we're attempting to pay for a fee for those. Subdivision development, we have been historically feeding the cost on that, and we're talking thousands and thousands of dollars that we eat in order to provide the electrical infrastructure for development. Most places now either make the developer pay in its entirety or only are willing to contribute a little bit. And so this is our first attempt to try to realign that fee schedule. So we're talking that, you know, twenty-five percent is, I think, a reasonable amount the town could ante up in order to promote development and yet still make the developer pay for most of that cost. Underground service, there's an attachment, I believe, on page twenty-one that talks about, you know, the cost of putting down underground service for individual houses. That's not a huge amount of money, but again, every little bit helps. Collectively, this is not all the fees that the town charges. I'm not going to suggest that to you. Did I go through every nook and cranny through the government to find it? No. This is the, what this was an attempt to do was get us off our space to get the bulk of what we're confronted with, largely because we're dealing with so much development coming into town to try to make it a little bit more equitable for taxpayers as opposed to developers. The balance of the costs. If you look on page twenty-four, I think that's twenty-four? Yep, twenty-four, you'll see the actual recommended list of the costs that we're advocating, that the town moved forward, and that's, that's pretty much it. I know it's a lot to digest, you know, there's certainly more than willing, I'm more than willing to answer any question you have, but we at least wanted to get it in front of you so that you can kind of, you know, see what's involved.
I see, so some of these line items here, yeah, we're behind.
Yes, yes, we, we, you know, some of this stuff has not been touched in years. And it just because it, you know, it just never was, and it shouldn't have been. And, you know, once again, like so many other things in town, where it just did not receive the level of attention it should have, and so we're trying to right the ship.
Mr. Speaker, you stated that we're not cutting off, you know, taking the bite out of everything, but is there anything in here regarding a fee for campering with meters?
Not that I'm aware of, no. There, there's nothing like that. I, I'm unaware that we had anything that speaks to that. I, I could be wrong. I, I just, I'm not familiar with the, with the utility department has ever charged, if anything. It seems like to me that that might be a criminal offense, but I would have to study that more cheap.
And then the other question I have, for Cemetery on the Hill, the fee is two fifty, but that
It was a hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's firm.
And now it's one two fifty, and at Oakwood it's going resident seven fifty, and non-resident thousand. Why is there a difference in one cemetery versus?
I think historically has really been an issue. The level of maintenance and care that Oakwood has gotten historically just requires a lot more resources. We just wanted to sort of move Cemetery on the Hill from what has historically been neglected to something where the town has taken a more active role to try to maintain and get into shape. It's going to take a lot more money to do that. But I think to jump from a hundred dollars, which is what we've been charging in the past, to say, okay, now we're going to make everybody pay five or six or seven hundred dollars, is that, that's kind of a big leap. And so I think the town, until we get, until we get the cemetery kind of more in shape, because it's still kind of primitive out there, we, it just needs to be incremental, and I think that was our thinking. I, I think it would be a lot, particularly in a given state, to sort of charge people the same thing you charge in Oakwood when the condition of the cemetery is radically different.
How often do you dwell in the cemetery on the hill?
Actually, this past year was the town's first effort at going in there and cleaning it up. There had been some question of ownership that has sort of was the barrier, even though I know it was kind of a gentleman's agreement between the owners of the, of the cemetery and the town's relationship with it. Once Mr. Medlin became the town administrator, one of the initiatives he undertook was to try to, you know, treat the cemetery in the same way that we treat Oakwood. And so we went in there with contractors to kind of get it more in shape, clean it up, get rid of a lot of, I mean, get rid of a lot of the debris that was basically growing in and up around the graves, fixed sunken graves, try to get it more in line with what, you know, a citizen that at Oakwood would receive, the same kind of treatment. And so it's just, it's going to take a long time to get it into that shape. The road, you know, the little road that goes around the circle of the thing, it's still not really got a shape, and we just have not had the resources to dump into it to get it to the level it needs. So like within the last year and a half. Well, currently it is maintained. We do, we have, we hire a contractor who maintains the lawn and stuff at Oakwood. They also do the same thing over at Cemetery on the Hill. It's going to take some additional work, whether it's a contractor or town staff, to rework the road and get the rest of the property in shape. It suffers from drainage issues, soil erosion control, still has some tree sumps that need to be removed. There's still some more debris that has to be dealt with. It was just our attempt, since historically it's never received much attention at all, to try to work to start getting it in shape. And as I indicated, we only started this like a year and a half ago. So we've, we've tried to do the best we can until, you know, resource. Sure. I think that, I think, you know, there was, there was a clear effort, I believe, on Mr. Medlin's part and several council members to bring some parity between the two, which I think is entirely appropriate because it's a support. You know, there's a lot of folks out at the Cemetery on the Hill that, you know, date back seventeen hundreds, a lot of famous people that were important to the town's evolution that are very out there. So I, I mean, it certainly has historical significance.
There's one, there's a lot of old issues of cemetery, it's my neighbor, it's right there in my house.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And the giant tree she was
Serious?
It's in my garden.
Yeah, right.
And I saw a tree that just fell down with two years ago in the path of that, that I rode it. And I had it in the face. I was just wondering.
Yeah. The, well, right now, the, the entrance into Cemetery on the Hill is going to be off TCM. There used to be historically a back entrance from where you live, but that is not, that, that will no longer be operated and no longer be functional. The main entrance, and in fact, we have plans to surface that road as part of the industrial park because it's a shared entrance with the industrial park. So come in there, and then you go to one side, and you go to Cemetery on the Hill. Then the other side, you can go actually into industrial area. Journal. Anyone else?
I certainly have no problem with the increase of usage fees. That's very appropriate and I think very fair. But I have real issues with fines. And it's something I have been very concerned about since I got out of this position long before that. To me, fines are incredibly unfair. You say a fifty dollar fine for illegal parking. You say a fifty dollar fine for illegal parking, two fifty. You hit me with that, you know, big deal.
Right.
It's not even going to affect. But you hit somebody who's working at McDonald's or living on the street with that fine, it's going to be an incredible burden. So I, I have a real problem with fines that are just fixed amounts. The, the amount should be based on people's ability to pay. Or at least some kind of alternative. But if somebody who weren't making ten bucks an hour doesn't have to pay the same fine that I am. And so I think we as a town really, I don't know what state laws is about this, you know, federal laws is about this. But I think it's something we need to look at, start saying that fees need to be based on people's, fines excuse me, to be based on people's ability to pay.
Um, I, I can't speak to, but any statutory requirements might be regarding that, that concept. Uh, if you want, the council is totally, uh, you know, if they choose to defer that element of the, these things. And if you want, we can look into that, uh, or you can exclude it and it's entitled if that's totally council part. It just needs to be included in the motion, however you guys.
Do you have a question? Okay. All right, uh, looking for a motion. And I, and I like, I'll make a motion, uh, that we adopt fee schedule with, uh, with the contingency of, because I just want to look further into that, this one, uh, one aspect of, towards, uh, these. Five, uh, and the rest of it, uh, we will to adopt.
I'll second.
Moving to the conference, are you any questions? Can we do that?
Uh, Mayor, here's a question, but can we, on Lee Galley's standpoint, how would you assess their fine? That's from a town standpoint. I mean, I know the courts have some judges, they go five or four. I don't believe you're about to.
I think what we're proposing here is that we look into it. I, I don't have the answer because that's a very legitimate question. To me, the way it would be done would be based on a percentage of somebody's grossing. Just because, uh, but I don't know if that's legal or not. What I am proposing, I assume with the mayor's approach, that we look into this and see what is, where are we able and then come back at a later date, try to come up with a plan that would provide a more, a more equitable, uh, structure for fines.
I just do want us to get a build of the situation as far as how you assess a fine in town hall or as far as being the problem, those that it is.
That's a little piece of, that's, uh, it's better than your speeding ticket. Get a speeding ticket, hopefully they look at your income ratio. And I agree with what you're saying, but I don't know that's feasible for other people.
Do you have any questions on that?
Right, you, um, when we was, when you was doing the God outline, we have, but the Lewisburg is already drawn and put all the other, uh, but that's how it's here in front of the counter, I'm sure. Then we go over to the proposed and have proposed the, the law.
The, the rate, the.
The rating is way up, that's what I'm saying. So real, Lewisburg is going to have all this time.
Um, there is a motion on the floor. Then that, then, um, I'm going to have mine, which we can limit it. I take that out or do you do, along with you, um?
Mayor, let me clarify this yours, saying that set up a fee, but that we would look at the fines and see what we could possibly do at a later date as a counter.
Yeah, that was, that was my thought for, for.
I second that.
So that motion would be, uh, that we adopt the fee, who, as, as proposed, it would be set on a five, which is, uh, make a fine. Further review.
We have talked about all the fees or does it? Any.
Is that you?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions to count as, could I help? Now, if you're voting, uh, in properly, rule and set. All in favor, now the motion, just make it real clear that whether it be a fee or just, we will adopt everything. That one item there tells out to a later fine after further. Okay, motion, about the second, all in favor? Uh, all opposed? Thank you. Item number eleven, resolution to a two one shortest response from.
Now, I'm not with counsel right now before you, you know, it's kind of required by the state beginning on the just for five or four. One of the things we need to have, the more shorty responsible, you need to have, I don't know if that can prove. Uh, and that's what you have in front of you. It's already been delivered, approved by the state and in an effort, uh, the ripple levels, but on to, uh, level that did, uh, rebel levels. And just just trying to keep up with the good grades of the states that we're behind, uh, grants funding. If it's something we need to get, well, it'll be.
Questions for county chairman to.
So this is a guess of a rally in the state, state just then. And that's a standard, what are these expanded, the various, L B and N act, you know, that's in two percent. But they won't also allow more to happen. Regardless how reliable the supply is.
This is going to affect that there was a large source.
Yes. And what's yours is dictated by double potential. Now, my shoe of that town would be really neat ahead.
No. No question?
Is there, uh, any likelihood that we're going to get into this situation in the near future?
No. Once we have a lot of government, it wants us to expand. We take a plan, going up to three billion gallons of water, and we send them blow out. I can see it being possible. As it is now, we won't ever even get to say one, much less, do pray hope.
Thank you, Bishop, for your first. If we move to property second, that we, uh, through the resolution for the one shortest fee, fine, all in favor? That's my, our vote. The next one is item twelve on the, on the, then the standing council compensation too. Uh, councilors, you can follow, last month, the last month, even, uh, I had made a motion that we, uh, took that in, uh, stipending for, uh, new council. I always since that time, I was, I've been informed both from, uh, legal now and I've also talked with, uh, representatives from council of government as well. We do have to wait, because this is, uh, we do have to wait till the next, uh, this will be make this, uh, adjustment in the, uh, in the budget for, for counting. Now, in, in my discussions with some of the members, uh, representatives from the council of government, they did say that, that is case, however, that is, uh, they are looking into the possibility of, uh, possibly making some adjustments to the ethnic policy, the municipality have elections of new council members and if they come in, uh, usually a, a, a stifling or compensation for a new council member's, on the scale. So they are looking at possibly changing that, uh, in, in future through a course. Uh, this very, very issue that we, uh, so, uh, uh, I'd make a motion to, uh, hopefully to give a second. And we rescind the motion that we made last month, I made last month, uh, with an attempt to, uh, reinstate your assignment. So I'd like to make a motion to rescind that motion. And wait till the end of, uh, fiscal year when we approach that item and our, for, for. The move to property setting, that we rescind the, uh, council compensation, uh, motion that we made last week, all in favor? Any questions? All opposed? Okay, item number thirteen, I'm discussing a directive for white flag.
Mayor, council, thank you. Last month at the meeting, I was given the directive by the council to, uh, seek out, uh, what the white flag shelter is and what it would entail to bring such to our community. Uh, so I've reached out in several areas, um, and I just want to share a little bit before I, I get started with this. Uh, Beverly touched the bullet on it earlier, a white flag shelter, uh, would provide for immediate short-term emergency shelter to individuals who experience or are experiencing homelessness during threshold defined severe weather conditions. Uh, at the council directive, I was to examine all elements involved with establishing a white flag shelter. Uh, as a resource, uh, I had reached out to Vance Haywood, who is the pastor at St. John's Metropolitan Community Church. I also attended a meeting with Councilman Stover and the Franklin County Board of Bay Council where Pastor Vance answered questions regarding the white flag shelter that they operate. Uh, in doing so, uh, Pastor Vance identified multiple factors to consider when evaluating the need to establish a white flag shelter. Uh, I had enormous amount of information and thought I should condense it so it would be a little more understandable. Uh, I reached out, uh, not only to Pastor Vance regarding the white flag shelter, I also reached out to Franklin County. Uh, I actually had our chief, uh, uh, input on this and I've attached all of this so you will have it for your view. Uh, some of the things that, uh, Pastor Vance mentioned, uh, that were identified and that we should consider regarding the white flag shelter was insurance liability. In this packet, you have a statement from our insurance carrier mentioning what we can do and what we cannot do. Uh, they were not happy with us looking at this. Uh, they will require a separate policy if this moves forward with no more than thirty bands. So I, I provided this, uh, for you all to look at. Uh, so that was one of the aspects that we had to consider. Uh, amenities in the shelter, I know that, uh, the white flag shelter in Raleigh, uh, offers food. However, in our discussion, it's called Brown Bag Ministries, they provide the food. They prepare the food, however, the shelter pays for it. So at the end of this exercise, what I've included does not include the money to have prepared food, uh, for the shelter here. Uh, and basically, there was a couple of things that he mentioned. Uh, on nights that is designated as white flag, they actually bring the food in so that the individual doesn't have to determine if they want to eat food or shelter. So my understanding from Pastor Vance was the food was only provided on nights that were designated as white flag. In the current shelter that they're in, they have shadows, however, there's not a mandate, not a state. Uh, and because of that, uh, they do not offer toiletries such as soap, towel, washcloth, toothbrushes, toothpaste. They don't provide all of that. So those are the things that we would have to consider. Uh, in the white shelter that they offer, cots are provided by Wake County. We do not have cots here. So I've included those cots and blankets, uh, and this is just general research, uh, on the internet. Uh, they mentioned staffing at their shelter, that's something we have to consider. Uh, they have paid staff now twenty-four seven. I know that in our previous meeting, it was stated that we would have volunteers. However, we have to be prepared for if no one shows up. If a volunteer is sick, do volunteers are sick, we have to be prepared for that.
This, even if you do have volunteers, does it require that I have staff, right?
If you have volunteers, I would say, no, you just have to have roughly two people or they have two people. Uh, there is, I would say, a mandate that shows how many people you have to have. They typically have two people and it's all based on gender.
Actually, they said that, uh, they didn't have gender. They said it could be two males, two females. Well, they didn't usually have two females. It could be two men.
Uh, unless I misunderstood, Councilman Stover, when we talk with Pastor Vance, it, because they have three shelters. It's a male identified, female identified, and a family's shelter. If it was female identified, they would not allow two males to work that show.
We're not going to do that.
Right. I, I mean, I'm just, I, I was finding facts, so I'm sharing what I found. Uh, this is, this is what we would have. So I put in my escutus, two people that were brought with fifteen hours uh, during a white flag designated night. Also, I've added two police officers because if nights are back to back, I can't have roughly the same officers working if they're on the field.
But you're that, police officer right here.
I would, uh, because if they're not trained and part of the, the information with the recommended staff, an individual needs to have CPR, Narcan, de-escalation training and familiarity with manual help. And if our volunteers don't have all of that or the, uh, employees don't have that, then I've got to have that.
Where is that?
Pastor Vance.
Something that falls your school training.
Right. I mean, I'm just saying, well, right now I prepared this ahead if we don't have that. Um, and then we have, uh, uh, the facility designation. Again, I know that it's been mentioned that it would be one shelter here. However, the shelter that I evaluated had three separate shelters. Uh, there's a cleaning aspect to it as well. Uh, and if you'll notice, I have an asterisk by food and a double asterisk by cleaning. On the second page, you'll see personnel calls, basic utilities, uh, for here, cots and blankets to purchase, cleaning supplies and cleaning of the building. Cleaning of the building does not include, uh, ventilation if they ever stay in this facility. We don't know what we would have to do for that. Uh, I contacted, uh, an individual, they did not contact me back, but I wanted to share as much as I could with this because that's what I was asked to do. And finally, the economic impact, we don't know what that would be, so I put that in there as well. But overall, I've estimated the cost to be about a hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred sixty-three dollars.
That'd assume you that there's no offer here in.
Exactly.
Which is not what we are proposing.
Uh, exactly, but we've got to be prepared if we don't have all of it. So that, that's what I think.
Now, it's already. Saying except for me, hopefully.
Yeah. Um, and in doing so, uh, when I reached out, I wanted to confirm my notice with, uh, Pastor Vance, so he worked at St. John's, and he told me the first year they operated, they did not pay rent. But with this, they were roughly a hundred fifty to a hundred seventy dollar bills.
And over that, three hundred fifty.
A hundred twenty first year, three thirty dollar.
We're docked by ten million.
So in, in reaching out, I, I reached out, uh, to the county, to Andy Payne over at DSS. Uh, for the last eight months, and this is a part of your packet, they have serviced eight people, I believe, if anyone's. I'm sorry, six. serviced eight people, I believe, if anyone's, uh, I'm sorry, six individuals who reported being homeless during an eight-month period. Um, I know I reached out to Beverly Kegley to get numbers, she provided me with twelve, and then she provided me with McKinney, dental program, which children that were considered homeless, and I think there was nineteen on the list that you gave them. In your packet, I had provided that information as well, so you would have an understanding of that. Uh, again, I asked the chief to prepare something for me as well. This is in the packet that, that goes into the greater detail about what the county does, because the county does offer services for homeless people as well. So I want to share that. Any questions?
Is there an amount regarding what that insurance policy is part?
It is not. Uh, there is an actual, uh, if you'll notice on the email that we received that says social services, we have to fill that out, get it back, and they'll help us.
How much town, how much money does the town receive annually in their budget for social purposes, from the county and the state?
Hmm, well, we per se don't receive it from the state, when we have people who are in need, they go to social services, social services, while they get and pay bills, utility to tax or those individuals that are on the, so they have to receive any part of the
But the town does?
Yes.
And you have these costs here, uh, this chart here, this is, uh, your information, your words, you know, now, uh, some of these, uh, look at it, give us some of the, you have to, uh, I'll be a person, some of the skills that were required, uh, required, let's have a thank God, you know, there is still policies here, there is still a, uh, CPR and some, there's still that required, we'll have to, we'll have, some covering here, that not, on, on.
Do you, do you estimate the sale to be made?
So should our insurance carrier drop this, is that a, yes?
Councilman Stover, I have a question, and you referenced Interfaith Council, and so are they going to be a part of this, are they going to be the directors of this?
I think that is something to be determined, but we have, it poses is a public-private partnership, and what, Interfaith Council and now several churches have approached me, are all looking at, is the county, excuse me, the town provides the space where the other agencies would provide volunteers, cots, the, we're, we're looking at cots for purchasing a covered trailer, a roof, a store, cots, it, or, it's not that, right? Pastor Vance said, they use cots, but low shelters, not, low shelters use, uh, bats. We already have, I believe we have four, and, uh, they, last year, I donated ten cots, the, uh, frankly, if it's cots we need, I'd donate twenty tomorrow. Uh, and pretty volunteers, I work for a volunteer organization, similar, we have to do all this same training that they're taught, first day, CPR, I don't need to do Narcan, that's not a big deal, so it's nothing to expect a volunteer to trade necessarily. We have volunteer firemen who spend far more time doing training than what this is going to require, and they'll get compensated. So, this would be a pri- private, public, I think the biggest issue in my mind is the insurance. We don't know what the answer there is, we need to find that out, and what's going to be the insurance cost, uh, you know, there's an issue of prime. Pastor Vance said they have not seen any great increase in prime around their shelter. And getting people off the street, many places, it's been shown to reduce money, increase it. So I think that, you know, this is the first step, I think this, Beverly showed, here's what the worst-case scenario. Well, you know, I don't think that's what we're looking at, I think we're looking at some part of town where this could be a partnership between, uh, NGOs throughout the town and county, in co- in, in cooperation with the town. And I don't see that these expenses are likely to be what we're looking at, we're probably looking at something smaller.
Is, is it fair to say that, um, like in Raleigh, they have three of these shelters, for the whole city of Raleigh?
No, this is just one organization, I think there were, there are two other organizations, like shelters, besides, uh, or Pastor Vance.
But it, it is likely that people from Rockhampton, if I'm here, Henderson, if you're coming here.
Highly unlikely. You're looking at, okay, the, this organization that we talked to, Pastor Vance, they run three shelters with a staff of four, the, uh, salvation army. During their shelters, a word called dropping, that means people can come in every day, every night, stay, and then every morning leave. Those are operating continuously. The white flag is only operated on cold nights. Um, you've got multiple shelters in both Raleigh's and Durham that are not only providing housing, they're providing detoxification, uh, they're providing treatment for alcoholism and addiction, they're providing, uh, employment training and housing assistance, right? We're not doing any of this. This shelter is not going to attract people from that county. All the counties around this and all the cities around this are already providing far more services. Providing people leave those places that have more services than we have to come here.
You're more Wilbur than this than I am, that's all I'm trying to ask.
Right, that's what I'm trying to explain. I mean, we are way behind the ankle ball in what the counties and communities around this. So we're not going to be drawing people, in my opinion, from other counties, we're simply going to be taking care of people here in our locality. And we have to also realize, folks that are homeless are not terribly mobile, right? A lot of them don't have a way to get, I mean, they can't pick up their tent and just, they're going to have to walk up here from Raleigh. I was driving up Capitol Boulevard after a meeting with Pastor Vance, and there were tents all the way along Capitol Boulevard.
Sir, what, what does Bud Youngsville Franklinson are surrounding?
Oh, I'm not talking about here in the county, I'm talking about.
I, I know, I'm asking whether they.
Far as I know, they're not doing anything. So I think, didn't folks in Franklin Express that is working with it?
Did you, and Bud, looking at it, did you have a church out there?
Right, we have a church down there, uh, Calvary Church at Five Points, there are four people, they're part of the Interfaith Council, they're trying to start up a shelter themselves.
So basically, your organization.
It's not fireworks.
Well, you're part of it.
Right.
You're a part of it. Um, so the organization that you're a part of just needs from the town are building and are resources.
Basically, the space. And, I mean, I think, uh, a lot of these other expenses could be absorbed, I mean, they've already, like I said, had several pastors that have approached us about how could we have.
I also heard from pastors today that says, we, we understand the need, but we can't take this on.
Right.
By ourselves, and, and I respect that also.
I mean, it's, yes, I mean, our church has a large fellowship home, and it's often in use during the hours that we're looking at. Reason we, I thought this would be a good alternative, is this space generally isn't used at the hour.
So is this the location, how much of the.
I would say either here or the one out on Industrial Drive.
The one on Industrial Drive would be the one that, you know, if you were to go back out, would be the one that would have the most limited, and if they, uh.
It's a little bit larger.
That, that would be, that would be the space that we would look at.
And both of these spaces, they're not in residential communities where they're likely going to pass the, um, they.
Question?
What I'd like to suggest is that we take this under advisement and give the other agencies involved here a chance to respond to this, in fact, later date, promote, on how they might help me some of it.
But I also think it would be wise for us to have a public hearing of the public, and I would agree with that, but as far as whether they're for or against, it doesn't matter, but just to hear from the public.
I think it's been served as light though.
I think that's a very reasonable concern, we need to get the, that cleared by our insurance carrier.
Liability, and of course, if I can afford it, probably, because it would be the town, the people of the towns that are on the ropes for this, and would also be paying for it.
So I make a motion that we table this, we'll find more information. I'll send it back.
Okay, if we move and properly set that we table, uh, we have a decade, uh.
Our next, right? I, I suppose that we make a motion that we table this to our next regular public meeting, that we have all the information that we put out, I mean. Okay, if we move.
Have a public hearing in regards to.
Before the meeting, council, I'd take the public hearing before the, we're going to have a next round of meetings.
Before we back in stage, we're going to have a public hearing.
So, sure, got your, your motion, right, we, we stayed out for.
So I make a motion that we table this to the next regular public meeting, so we can have a public input on this matter.
And, if we move and properly set that we, uh, table this, this item until, uh, we have progress information as well as, uh, public in. Yeah. All in favor?
I have.
Thank you. I remember for two, uh, we trust the case of HR directive to this, and part-time for
Mayor, uh, Town Council, uh.
Could, could we, uh, have that discussion?
Mayor, Town Council, I'm calling from the right, uh, is a request to, uh, re-classify the part-time human resource director position, which has been vacant for eight months with minimal interest. Uh, I'd like to request, re-classify and create full-time position to further develop the town's ability to meet its service need. Physician, I request you re-classify, again, is for the human resources director position for part-time, full-time, the job duties, uh, for this position largely involving core relations, recruiting, benefits, and policy, policy implementation, jumping every period, while ensuring adherents to comply with federal state laws with regards to the town. At this time, the request will be full-time position of role to the town as a new president. And I'm asking for relation to re-classify the position of our.
Good God, okay. Have a second.
Uh.
Go, Eddie. If you make a second, we can have a question.
How's that hit?
The move is properly set, uh, that we, uh, re-classify the position of part-time, full-time. Now, question?
Okay, my question is, do you not have the part-time person that we're trying to start? We have a contract person, that I'm ready to start, that knows y'all as retired, and is down, y'all told, so he can have to come in, tomorrow, sit down, and start working. And this position been on the table for, I think, eight months, and now they're adding about to snap every day. And I would think we, you know, take this part-time person, clear the, yeah. Uh, Councilman, right, at this point, the full-time, I think we would better serve the Councilmen, have, uh, more, uh, rest, we could apply. I'm coming as, as, uh, uh, coming in and applying, or in seven, I'd say, and, uh, and work with her. Well, it's our potential, she was, uh, an HR, uh, representative, she had worked at several, uh, corporate, industry, and she also had here several years of experience in, 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 recruiting, employee relations, she had a full right of, uh, but she wanted full-time. Okay. But I just still think it'll be, I'd better serve the town for somebody who knows the y'all to come in and start working tomorrow, and still open the gates so people can apply. And since this person already knows, and have the potential, and have retired from the position, and have worked here in the first before, I think it'll be better. So, because this is a position that has been open for a long time. And again, I understand that, but I think if we can get this re-classified, we can run this, see what potential comes in.
But we still have personnel issues that may come upon us as, as we look at this. Uh, in, in the issue, I see that we would have the service of a human resources person in-house, right now, to handle what other issue that may come about. However, we're not talking about, uh, a full-time person, we still be looking for a full-time person, however, during this time, that we're looking for a full-time person, our personnel issue not stop. Uh, we still have issues that we have to deal with personnel. I think a temporary person, uh, experienced person, could fill this busy bullet, because we only talking about temporary, while we're looking for a full-time. And that person as well could assist, uh, uh, in helping us to recruit a full-time. And as soon as that person brought on board, and it could be, uh, three days, tomorrow or something, or however, uh, we would still have the services of a human resources individual while we, that's what I think would help us, we are dealing short-term needs while we're working on the long term. That's, to me, that seems a logical way to do a lot of money.
Mayor, are you referencing the, um, employee that we have on contract that left the job?
Yes.
So, um, I know that we've had discussion regarding this, because this is what we hired a town minister here to do, this is the job, this is this position. A HR director is, does not fall into our line of, um, we, um, accept, he's asking for us to up high the position, and that's the question, that's the motion. So that's what's at hand right now, not what we're going to bring on the, in terms of, for you.
I understand that, that's the part that I'm making is the, if you're talking about human resources personnel, you're talking about that, that's the different, I think, I think that is, you believe that's a different field, you believe, if we can fill it tomorrow in a full-time position, I would assume we wouldn't do it, with a qualified personnel. However, we don't know if we can fill it tomorrow, but we do know that we could get a temporary person on board tomorrow to assist and provide human resource services. You would, and that would not be taking, uh. You know, and that would not be taking, uh, away from his authority in the heart of it. And we are not telling him this, just simply recommending that for us to consider joining. And in the meantime, it will be some supplying needs, a need right now. And we are facing a human resources. This, maybe either way, we have to make the decision, promotions are made, etc., that we need to, are we going to reclassify this to a full-time position or not? That's, that's that question.
Do I ask a question? If we reclassifying this, is there any, does that prevent us from going ahead and hiring a contractor in the interim until this position can be filled?
So definitely not going, you've been waiting like lots and you'll buy the.
I was addressing this to Mr. Menzel.
So technically, uh, we have access to HR functions through the league. They would come out and assist if we needed particular help with particular issues. Um, but in this case, I'm asking so we can have someone in-house, we don't have to reach out.
How quickly do you expect to be filled last?
If approved tonight, we'll get it posted tomorrow, get it out of the, uh, league's website as well. And hopefully, we're active in the next few days.
So. You would anticipate filling this position within thirty, sixty days?
Well, I asked that same question, so we need a budget back in June. Uh, why it's cut for a part-time, we got a four-time, because we were putting more four-time, and Carol works left. And he said, I know she put out a plan, there you go. She was a student, so I knew that she would do it. But when we first started talking about human resources, then the money wasn't there for a full-time person. Now we have someone that wants to come in and take the book, a, a hard time to pay. And you don't want to give them, want to try to reclassify, get some more money, and wait another thirty days to, whatever, to hire somebody. Instead of getting somebody that already knows the person, that has retired.
She did not get hired from this position.
She retired from her own.
I, I did not expect that, but.
She has a law degree.
And we're not hiring an attorney.
We don't need an attorney, we have.
Well, you're the one who's.
But I'm saying, somebody that's qualified, is ready to start, but you rather wait.
This has nothing to do with what, what motion is on the floor, I'm gonna say. We have certain, like, uh, we're moving on, emotional, we're doing, I'm gonna say. We classify the position, human resources, part-time. All in favor?
Aye.
All in. So, so we will look for, uh. All right, discussion of John, please, uh, I have number fifteen. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, page thirty-six is a notice consent out to, I'm not exactly sure who exactly this was sent to, but it was sent to a lot of, I, I think folks that live on the west side of Lewisburg itself, including, uh, that the state, uh, Department of Transportation is proposing permanently closing the intersection of West Johnson Street, it's out Main Street. Directly adjacent to the courthouse annex. Uh, needless to say, this has caused quite a bit of consternation. Uh, and I've already been in communications, uh, second page of this is missing, but if you replace, make comments to a gentleman called Mr. Kell. I've already communicated my concern with this, and he has already responded back to me. I told him that we'd be discussing it tonight, and he is very interesting, hearing what, now council, that it's. Uh, I have many, many concerns. Uh, my understanding, the notice that they sent out to us only addresses parking. I fail to see how closing Johnson Street is what I change, parking. But apparently, when I talk about, excuse Mr. Medley, that there also is a concern about safety. Apparently, there has been a higher incidence accidents at this intersection than. But I don't think that this is the answer to the problem. I use this intersection probably three, four times a day. It is a problem, the court is in session. It's a huge line of people. I wish the county could come up with a better way. Use the corner. It's out of our jurisdiction.
Do you know who initiated this and for?
I, I do not. I was trying, I asked Mr. Medley to get them. Apparently, this was presented to the council back when John Eifler was.
Oh, I don't remember that one. Yeah. I have to go back to the.
But this is basically, to me, is kind of an easy butcher knife for a scalpel. I mean, the problem down there is on the mornings when court is in session, it is. All right, but the rest of the time, that intersection is barely, but alive. Uh, and so they're talking about completely doing away with this intersection to deal with something that probably only covers the twelve, fifteen hours.
But I was also told that the concrete barriers that they're going to put in place were not prohibited emergency vehicles from crossing over.
That I'm not aware of.
Well, if that's the case, cars are going to just go over.
Well, you're pointing there too.
So, I mean, I, I'm going to, we as council, the town, commit a motion.
Well, there's a resolution that I had proposed in your package, right, you said. There are seven issues that I see with this. First is a large number of the folks that live in West Lewisburg between college and the river use this intersection to avoid having to go through downtown to access South Main Street, South Vicore, thereby relieving a lot of the congestion downtown. Johnson Street was put there originally to take pressure off of Nashville. Secondly, the closure is done during the time when the court is in session. All this traffic that right now comes in and out of this intersection is going to be forced into, is going to be forced onto Nashville. So you're going to create a whole lot more congestion. Uh, as far as the need for more parking, we've got two mission parking lots that aren't being used. All right, so why not direct people to park over there? It's only a mile away. You know, I'm planning on proposing to the council later on, I'm planning on bringing this on out. If we use that space where the, um, food truck, how that's been to open up, open air market like Franklinton does on Saturday, which I think has been a big draw to their downtown, this would make it much harder to use that. Um, the closure is going to, like it's, the, the, with, uh, fire and rescue now, instead of coming through Johnson Street, but have to come through downtown to access any areas to West Lewis. Um, and that again would have urgency given point for more congested downtown area instead of using this street. Um, this street is used for staging of the critical parade. This is where they come in and, uh, the participants are dismissed and they go on their way, but they interfere with that. And it's going to make access to the park more difficult. And there's a lot of buses that go, uh, full, activity buses, now that again have to drive to the downtown area to get to the school. So I am proposing that we send a, a, ask the Department of Transportation to forego this project and look to alternative. I think alternatives, again, I use this intersection a lot. One of the problems, if you look right here, they only have one parking space locked off next to the courthouse. And what you have a lot of times is people trying to get into these parking spaces or stop and drop people off. It blocks the rest of the traffic for them to get through the intersection. Often people are caught in the middle of the intersection, waiting for somebody to drop off. So they would close these two and make them for stopping only, that would give people a place to pull off and not block the intersection to drop them off, and you wouldn't have cars trying to park there. Um, also, if this is a real problem, we could put up temporary, uh, barricades during the mornings where the court is in session. It's typically only three or four hours on, I put, I think it's three mornings a week, they have court sessions. Uh, and that would prevent traffic during those times, but then the rest of the time would be open to, uh, traffic. The last thing I put in here, and I, I had stated to do this, uh, I haven't dealt with the D O T. I have been on the receiving end, at least, of, uh, inquiry from the governor's office. I worked for the Department of Corrections for a long time. And we used to get, uh, inquiries from the governor's office all the time about prisoners. Believe me, we paid attention. So if, the, what I have put in here, the second thing is the D O T won't do, won't honor our request, and then we ask Mr. Medley to contact the governor's office. I don't know if that's something we want to include or not. But this is the proposal that I am making, Mr. Redd.
I make a motion that we approve this regulation presented by Councilman Stover. I second that, I second.
We're just probably set that we, uh, that the resolution presented by Councilman Stover as relates to the, uh, Johnson Street project, all in favor?
Aye.
All in. This is, uh, the, I have number sixteen, this is the fourth.
Mayor and town council, uh, tonight I would like to advise you that staff at Superior and Freedom was in the D O T relative to you for the reason of the project. Uh, as you may have noticed, activity at the old Union Art on the End Street, the one that we were at last week, uh, which was a new port gas tank. Uh, staff is working to move forward with some preliminary time work for the site, it's ready to be done in four blocks around that area. Uh, staff is working with T R C in regards to extract and additional removal of debris from the river. Initial cost of the truck came in two hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, staff received a change order option that involved additional removal of debris. And the change order included the additional debris removal came in at three hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, we have, we have a truck on available right now of two hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and sixty-eight, therefore leaving an additional cost of one hundred and fifty thousand three twelve for the company to purr. Uh, staff has reached out and prepared a petition to inquire on the vendor, if the town could provide trucks for the additional, uh, debris removal, uh, if this would have an impact on the cost of this project. Uh, the funding award recommendations through the state water infrastructure authority related to the Roderickton replacement has been announced, and the project has been awarded, and it came out of fifty percent grant and a fifty percent loan for an overall total project cost of six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So at this point, the town would be, uh, would be eligible for, uh, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar grant. Uh, after the mention of a bump out of North Main in our last meeting, we yet had another incident, uh, at this, uh, uh, bump out, and that was on January the third. Uh, staff has been saw reflected part of our pain before being to about drivers of this bump out, see how this goes.
Can I add a question?
Yes.
I had some folks approach me about this, a problem. Uh, they suggested that we put lighting in the tree, like, uh, done it like door building mall, which could be done with, uh, solar, uh, which would make that, I think, both much more, much more attractive, be a focal point for the downtown, as well as provide, uh, some better visibility. The other thing I, that I came up with, I don't know how many of you have seen the tunnel in Franklin, in front of the. Wonderful, I was thinking we could put a little tunnel over the walkway right there and, and like that. Except with, uh, over like.
Across the walkway?
No, just, just over the.
Okay.
Oh, I don't know where across this really.
Just, just a little. You know, the little church in the reality is, um, the fact is.
We thank the best.
Yeah, let's sit and suggest that, okay?
I have to get over Zach on that. He built that, uh, the town manager in Franklin, he built that, that you say he built that.
Very attractive.
Uh, and finally, a special call meeting on February the night before the part-time car chase position. The job description is available at a pay grade twenty, uh, in the salary range. Uh, I have a correction for you. I've got sixty-four nine eighty to ninety-seven four seventy. It should be sixty-seven five seventy-nine twenty to one oh one three sixty-eight. I apologize.
That's the mayor's report. Honored towards, uh, very short in time, I have been, uh, involved with, uh, quite a few speaking engagements, uh, as a leader of Black History Month. Speaking with various churches and also an organization out of Raleigh, uh, with, uh, asked me to speak with them, giving them some Black History, uh, comments there, and also, uh, honored, uh, I think for just simply, uh, becoming the first African-American mayor of the town of Lewisburg, which I thought would be accolade there, and, uh, honored that they have to put that on people. And then I have several more, uh, speaking engagements that we will take, uh, Black History Month as well. And, uh, I must say that, uh, again, uh, we get some good accolades from, from town of Lewisburg, about the town of Lewisburg from people who are, who are watching us stand, uh, speaking, we have a great future, and, uh, and I apologize for this, uh, you, you can't keep that, that outfit, uh, that positive outlook that we have, we own the town, that is, that's. My report, and, uh, I have number eighteen, uh, you can do a abbreviated report, or you can do that in a vote of the police and power report, it would be you.
I, I have one second time, um, if I can tell if you're reading any questions, I would have to.
Keep letting them.
I'm saying, like, I was fourth in the, in the packet. I do want to publicly apologize to Mr. Bobby Cooper and the Historical Commission. Um, I believe you were misled on a request for some fire prevention areas you wanted to address. I'd be glad to meet up with you and, and think your committee about doing what's up.
All right, thank you. Uh, I don't know which one the council, council, uh, councilman, I'm glad you have anything, uh, to add, uh, hey, town board, uh, thank you.
Um, again, thank you all for coming out tonight. Uh, we appreciate your interest and your patience, and this is a, something that we're fond of session. Um, more to that, I think, community interest and involvement in this court what we do, uh, I've related in notes, um, I know I was listening to the meeting back in the last weeks, the residents in the Ford Circle Justice Street area about, um, traffic noise, uh, complaints, um, they were able to work with our chief advocate, who has it noted in his report, and it sounds like things are already, there's been some more, uh, enforcement. And that's meeting members coming forward to, um, request a need for address. That's all I got. We can't pick, so we don't know.
I was wondering, right?
Yeah, uh, I did attend the court, uh, exhibit board meeting and the director's meeting in Lake River, uh, here. Also, I spoke at the Black History Program at Lewisburg seventy-seven, October the eighth. I also attended a Black History Program at the La Quinta in Western House Boulevard in Raleigh, uh, where, uh, that's where the A and S middle, uh, community. uh, where, uh, as with the A S M L, for our community services, uh, we have had a public offer. And, um, so to give the flag, and the history and public knowledge, for, and they also have a star, thank you.
Thank you, um, councilman Stover.
Um, good evening, thanks for coming out. If you have the desire to serve your community, please consider being a volunteer prior department for the town of Lewisburg, they are always looking for, um, new applicants. Um, address in your home, if you can't see your house's number, neither can they. So please consider that, they're trying to get to you as quickly as possible, so, um, I'm gonna go there.
Um, so, thank you all for coming again. Um, as in, y'all still on the right, I have, I too have quite a few speaking engagements, I have, um, at the same place for Black History Month, I had another one in the past, and have quite a few speaking engagements for Black History Month. Um, I had my guest bed in my church, while I had a friend that, uh, actually, he was a director of last community, and, um, I think the town will be interested in y'all to be on the council, to be present.
I'll just go.
Um, thank you all again for your attendance. Um, it's my understanding that in the past, we had a citizens advisory committee looking at economic development at town area. We also had an economic development director, and I would like to see both of those be reestablished. Uh, and I'd like to see that put on the agenda in the future.
Thank you. All right, item number twenty-one, uh, the closed session, uh, closed session one forty-three, that's three, eighteen, that's eleven, for, uh, six personnel, uh, can I get a motion to go into the closed session? All right. And you can call for a second, everything goes, uh, closed session for, uh, discussion of personnel. Yeah, uh, citizens, uh, thank you for coming out, uh, this is the last item on the agenda. Feel free, if you'd like to, uh, stay until after you come out of the closed session, you are, uh, you're welcome to do so. Okay. Do you think this all is fair, uh, or can I get a motion to go into closed session? Okay, all is fair, go into closed session.
All right.